Marketing, signature and our neighborhood schools because there are a lot of wonderful things that are going on. And then thinking about our facilities, we want to make sure that as we get additional money in, that we are addressing some of our capital project needs in our building. And then most importantly, we want to make sure we're assuring long-term fiscal sustainability. As we get one-time use money, how do we maximize that and increase the life of that money to better serve our students? So those are several of the areas that we're looking at, and I'll come back at the end and kind of close out how all of this will ultimately be tied in and packaged in a way that's very digestible for this board and the community at large.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. So we really want to make sure we share with the public kind of the high points of where we are in this process. And this year's been unusual because of the legislative season and COVID-19. So we've been moving and adapting quickly, and I want to thank our budget team for that work, as well as our cabinet and board who have all had to be patient and involved in that process. Really important for us to note when we're planning in our budget that 83% of our local revenue comes from our current property taxes, a little over 85 when you add in the delinquents, and 8.57% from Proposition C sales tax. Those are important, and you'll notice them later. This is a snapshot of where we are right now at the operating budget. And if you can see my cursor, I'm showing you in column D, this is the preliminary budget that we are working on for revenues right now. You see in blue the lines that are some things that we are targeting as probable decreases because of the economy and the impacts of COVID. Property taxes, we're really assuming will be flat when you look at this year's projected actual to next year's budget, but we are projecting some decreases on some of these When you look at the state sources of revenue, really interesting story, zero from the state foundation formula. We do in fact have a negative state funding expectation because of the MOUs we've entered into this year and expect to probably enter into for next year where local revenues for charters pass through our state formula netting negative amounts for us. So the implication of state revenue is really insignificant, and you hear Mr. Abarka say this every time he does the treasurer's report, our reliance on property taxes and local revenue is the major portion of our operating budget outside of federal programs. When it comes to federal programs, we do have significant dollars that come to us from the programs that you see listed there. How they are used is pretty specific, and in some cases, a direct reimbursement model. Important to note at the bottom of the slide, we have some new federal funding coming via the CARES Act related to COVID-19. We will receive 7.17% of a statewide allocation of these CARES Act dollars. It's based on Title I allocations, so districts like Kansas City Public Schools with high free and reduced populations will get a higher proportionate share. That is the intent of this money to make sure that our districts have access, to make sure that we're supporting digital learning in this transition at this point in time. We do share of that 7.17%, we have an obligated share with non-public schools in Kansas City of about $1.1 million, netting what we'll get to keep to be about $5.9 million. We will use that for some one-time purchase recommendation related specifically to digital Here you see again a spreadsheet similar to the first with state and federal revenues, preliminary budget here in D, basic formula monies. You do see that we are expecting a decrease here that has to do not as much with the amount of state revenue per pupil, but the per pupil counts between charter schools and Kansas City Public Schools and expected change there. You'll see also we are determining we'll have no E-rate revenues next year. That's because we won't have any E-rate eligible expense. Medicaid right now, we're looking at this a little, a little flat. However, it's important to note that if we end up in a school year where we don't have in-person school on a regular basis, our Medicaid billable reimbursable items will reduce. So that line also is one that we'll keep a close eye on. So all in all, we are looking at a net decrease in revenues. And then we wanted to quickly show you kind of the highlights and high points for expenditures so that we make time for public comment. We have some ongoing costs listed here, just over $4 million. This relates to offering steps for experience on salary schedules, supporting increases in insurance and retirement, and then what I refer to as fixed costs. Some of these things we don't really necessarily control but are obligated to. We already have a transportation contract that calls for a 3% increase. Utilities, we are net zero here, and that's largely because of the sale of 1211 McGee and the fact that we've had utility costs there this year that we will not. Property and liability insurance, we are simply seeing the market demand increases there, not a lot we can do about it unless we went to much higher deductibles. And then the Board of Education is showing an increase because we are at a point where we have a board election year. That happens every other year. So next year, we'll need expenditure money in the budget for that. Additionally, it is time for the redistricting per the KCEB. Our challenges and risks relate to the 2019 reassessment. We are at budget, basically right at budget here in the middle of June, of May for this year on our property tax revenues for current, however, delinquent is trending below. And we don't know next year what our resources will be necessarily because we have some taxes paid under protests that we don't yet know the outcome of. Really important, the COVID-19 and that lingering impact on the economy as at the state level, sales tax collections are down. That will cause a decline in revenue for us. We are worried that the state's cash flow will cause for possible withholdings during the year. I think that could happen as early as June this year because of the delay of income tax payments being due. And then there are other things along there that are really important that we'll be watching as well. Some additional challenges at risk, legislative session ends Friday. However, there are still three bills in Jeff City that potentially could come up and cause fiscal planning implications for us. We'll be watching those very closely through this week. And then the other greatest factor in our budget planning is all around student enrollment and those trends and what might happen to our student count next year as compared to this year. And I will turn it back to Dr. Bedell.
Thank you. And so as we get ready to close out, this is generally how we operate in terms of putting this budget together. And what will guide the final budget recommendation that I will present to the board is, number one, alignment to board and administrative policy. We have a strategic plan that right now, we want to make sure that there's a tight adherence to the direction of that strategic plan. So a number of those items that I shared with you on slide five, I believe, directly points to critical areas within our strategic plan that we have to focus on. The equity model that we have, so making sure that we have our equity policy 0.0, that we're adhering to the equity model and we're doing everything in our power to provide the additional support that's needed to our tier-three schools, tier-two schools that need a little bit more support to level the playing field. We also want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the various student populations that we serve. So those are items we have to take into account. And as I've said before, making sure that we look at long-term fiscal sustainability and security. That doesn't mean let's all of a sudden become ultra-conservative. We still want to make sure that we have opportunities to be bold, to think outside the box, to potentially reimagine education and how do we do that? But yet make sure that we are protecting our fund balance for that rainy day should it ever come. And then we have to also take into account, every year, there's state and federal legislation that once the session ends, some of these, it takes a year for many of these bills to hit the books, but we have to take into account, what does that mean for us in our decision-making? And then last but not least, getting a board of director and community input, because this is one of the four major things that are required of our board as a part of their governance responsibilities.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. Thank you for the presentation. It would now be in order to have a motion to open the floor to public comments.
Some moved.
Second. All right. It has been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote. The secretary will call the roll.
I apologize. Guys, Ms. Manzer?
Yes.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Westerstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolf.
Yes.
Thank you. I'll hand this back over to Treasurer Manny Abarka to handle public comment.
Yeah, just to make things a little more efficient, I didn't realize that this is, this presentation is going to take up such a large portion. So I want to be cognizant of those who are here to comment as well as the letters. So I ask that you do your best to minimize your comments, two, three minutes, and then I'll ask June to post the video that we had set up, I guess, within our board packet and do it that way. So without further ado, Mr. John Fierro is here from Matty Rhodes.
Hear me? I think.
We can hear you now.
Chair, you can hear me now. I just, a point of clarification, we had scheduled a three-minute slot for my colleague, Peter Jones, and then I was going to follow him with three minutes. Is that still okay or do I just take the three minutes?
Yes, you're good, John. Yep. You're scheduled as is.
Okay. All right. So June, do you want to unmute Peter Jones first?
Go ahead, John. You're good. Oh, I'm sorry. You're trying to have John go first. Yeah, we want to do that.
I want Peter to go first.
Oh, sorry.
My name is, can you hear me? This is Peter.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. I am in the Northeast Middle School and Northeast High School. Actually, Melena Banger had handed off that role excellently, and she is currently working for KCPS. My position is funded by KCPS, and I work with multiple students throughout the day on their mental health needs. You know, one of the, I'd like to kind of start with just a story of the students that I've been working with currently and when they are dealing with these current mental health crises. One of the things that the current student, a man by the name of Felix, and he is a Hispanic person that is currently living at home, and the family dynamics have completely changed due to this COVID response, and that's a focus of our therapy. And with these family dynamics that have changed and the school dynamics that are changing and all these uncertainties, this is where I'm finding that the students are really seeking for mental health to understand how to cope with these changes and understanding the rebuilding of routines, the new home life with the new family dynamics, with the family being out of work. These changes that are reflecting what the high school and the middle school therapists would be dealing with on the surface of each session. You know, the deeper issues which will also be shown throughout this COVID, which I'm learning to kind of uncover is certain things such as incest and rape and malnourishment, physical abuse, sexual abuse, and substance abuse were all topics prior to the COVID response. Now that our students have been in the homes, sometimes these homes can be a scary place to be, and currently with COVID, it could even be twofold scarier. So what I'm expecting as an in-school therapist is to have more students have an increased need due to these current conditions and just the current dynamics within the home with how possible other family members might be living in the home, creating different environments, so on and so forth, and creating depression. And of course, my standard duties would be certain things such as like suicidal tests and things like that. And so obviously, with these things being major topics, this role is incredibly important. That's all.
John, I think you're following up, and that was perfect. That was right at three minutes.
Great. Well, thank you Treasurer Abarka, my good friend Chairwoman Manzer, Dr. Bedell, and the board. What I wanted to share with you is that Matty Rhodes Center, since its inception over 126 years ago, has focused on improved student learning, partnering with the Kansas City Public Schools specifically. And a lot of our work has focused primarily on the 2018-2023 Strategic Plan, pillar B, and strategic priorities four, five, and six. Amongst the services that we offer include behavioral health, youth development, health and wellness, and art education. And we work in both Historic Northeast and in the West Side, but most of our resources, probably about 80% of our 2.9 million budget is focused on Historic Northeast. And you know, the Kansas City, Missouri Police Department has deemed that as one of the hotspots for crime. And within KCPS, you obviously know you have the Northeast Middle, Northeast High, James, Gladstone, Garfield, all within walking distance of one another. And I want to point out a message within the strategic plan that Dr. Bedell stated, and that is Kansas City has such remarkable resources, it would be foolish not to utilize them. To date, we are leveraging a little over a half million dollars to support families and children within the Kansas City Public Schools. And in the written presentation, it gives you an itemized list of those specific services. What I'm asking is that KCPS restore the original funding to Matty Rhodes, which was at $100,000 a year before this academic year to support two full-time therapists, one at Northeast Middle and the other at Northeast High. Right now, Mr. Jones is going between both schools. And then finally, that we would ask you to consider providing us an additional $100,000 to provide two full-time therapists at Garfield and Gladstone. The goal of these two new positions would address strategic goal number one that states every student will receive the social, emotional, cognitive health and community support necessary to be successful by the end of grade three. So in conclusion, we enjoy our long-term partnership. I think we have continued to demonstrate we are leveraging private, public dollars to support what you provide to us, and our goal is the same as yours, to improve student learning. So thank you, Mr. Abarka, and all of my old friends on the board. I miss you guys, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fierro, and thank you for both of you all from Matty Rhodes presenting today. We have up next from the DAC, Ms. Susan Stocking, and thank you all for complying with that three minutes. It's working great.
Good evening, Chairwoman Manzer, and Mr. Abarka, and Dr. Bedell, and the rest of the board. Ms. Clemmons, thank you for that presentation, and I think a lot of what I have to say really piggybacks on what Mr. Fierro said. I'm just recognizing that we are going to have an enormous need for additional social workers and counselors, family liaisons to recognize stress in students and family situations. We are going to need to, I'm glad that we have the CARES money going for the hotspots and equipment, but we need to figure out going beyond equipment pickup, how we need to reach out to our families for equipment delivery. I read an article in the paper this morning that pointed out that so many of our families don't have access to transportation to come to a pickup situation. I think we also need to consider the equipment needs for families with multiple children. When we had the dramatic shift after spring break, some students were able to seamlessly transition to online learning. For families with multiple children had to share one computer, and that created a lot of obstacles to learning. I would encourage the district to continue to put money into justice in the schools, understanding that we will have a lot of homelessness and evictions that are happening after the eviction moratorium ends, I think, next month, and that we continue our partnership with Alive and Well, because they have that trauma-informed programming and have experience with creating that programming for the community, which is desperately needed right now. So thank you for all your hard work. I can't imagine all the obstacles you're facing in light of what the state school board recommendations came out with transportation. It's just very overwhelming to me, and I appreciate the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Stocking. Next, we have also from the DAC, Demonte Rochester.
Hi, this is Susan. Hey, June, you unmuted me.
Looks like we got a tech difficulty.
We're not seeing Demonte's phone number as one of the numbers listed.
Okay, let's move on to Ms. Nia Webster, and we'll come back if we need to.
We're trying to figure out which phone number is Nia, sorry. But she's unmuted. We unmuted everybody.
Sounds like Nia's talking.
You ready for me?
Yes.
Nia Richardson with the City of Kansas City, the KC Biz Care Office, coming before you today to talk about the contracting opportunity side with the district. I've been working with, our office has been working with some of the local minority chambers, business associations, and organizations to look for ways during this time for response and recovery for our small businesses, particularly our minority businesses here in Kansas City. As many of you may or may not know, the City of Kansas City, the county, the school district, and the ATA participated in a disparity study in 2016. If you may or may not also know that with the City of Kansas City, for those who are certified, that certification is accepted by the school district as well. So we want to see if there was ways that we could partner in and identify more opportunities for our local and minority businesses, especially as you guys begin to pivot with the technology and things that you will need to service our students during the COVID-19 and beyond. And we just encourage you to look locally and look for your minority, your women-owned businesses here in Kansas City. Support these businesses, support the parents of the students that you guys work with. And I believe that was it. I think I have a short one.
Thank you, Ms. Webster. I just want to give one more opportunity to Mr. Rochester, if he's available. All right. Sounds like Demonte may not have been able to join us tonight. Just briefly, I wanted to at least give a quick highlight of the 10 total letters that we received as well for public comment. And thank you, Board Chair, for allowing me to run through this quickly. We received a letter from the Harmony Project, and I'm just going to again read some snippets and then forward this out for full board review. At Harmony Project, we believe that zip codes should not determine access to the arts. Most children in the urban core do not have access to a strings or band program at school. In fact, four out of five of our middle school and high school students do not have the privilege. Harmony Project KC is so much more than music. Built through a public health perspective, HPKC is harnessing the power of the arts and performance opportunities to increase the academic and social outcomes for children. Our high school students are earning scholarships and looking at colleges. Our experiences this year with K through second grade at Wheatly have been amazing. The children are learning and loving their experiences, building confidence and character. And then Ms. Schultz, the executive director, asked for continued support for this effort. We received a letter from the Hispanic Development Fund, which is a scholarship fund. We are nearing the completion of a pilot year at Lincoln Prep, and we are proud of the work we were able to accomplish, especially around, especially proud of our recent COVID outreach to students and families when they could no longer receive college advising at school. I've highlighted a few services and wins from this program, Experience College Advisors, connections to our 20 college partners, Family College Campus Tour, ACT Prep, Senior Seminar Support, Family College Nights, Scholarship Workshops, Post-Secondary Data Tracking, and Increased Scholarships Dollars. In 2019, the Lincoln Prep had four HDF scholarship application recipients. In 2020, because of this program, Lincoln Prep had 34 applications and 21 recipients totaling $40,000 in scholarships. We currently are in talks with Principals at East and Northeast High School to expand this program. The next one we have is from Ms. Winifred Jamison, a parent of KCPS for 25 years. When my son Howard began Mocha, Men of Color, Honor, and Ambition, he was really struggling at school and struggling at home. While I can see some difference Mocha has made academically and his general attitude towards the future, it's Howard leadership ability that have grown the most. Howard's father was deported 15 years ago, and we have no extended family in the area, leaving me to raise Howard alone. We were doing quite well until Howard became 18, when he started making some bad choices and almost getting suspended from school. It was then I reached out to Dr. Davis, who told me about the new KCPS Mocha program. I'm proud to report that Howard was accepted at numerous great colleges and universities and has decided to attend UMC this fall, where he will be majoring in kinesiology with plans to go on to their physical assistance program with emphasis in sports medicine. It is for the above reasons that I encourage KCPS to not only continue, excuse me, continuing mentoring programs like Mocha, but expand them as much as possible. That one got me. Helping, this one is from Mr. Rex Hobart from the Northeast Arts KC. My name is Scott Hobart. I'm 48-year-old father of two boys, 10 and 14 years in age. I'm also resident technical director, science artist at the Coterie Theater, Crown Center, a board member of Northeast Arts and a local writing, recording, and performing music artist. As a kid who didn't understand sports and was not inclined toward any other potential vocation than what drawing and painting might lead me to, I cannot overestimate the opportunities that my public school art teachers and elementary classes that devise continue to afford me. Your challenge is great, and I know there will be, never be enough money to make everything. Everyone wants needs happen, but please know the arts education and adept of character is and views as important to anything else. Moving on to Ms. Donna Miller-Brown, I work as a production manager at Kaufman Center for the Performing Arts. The auditorium in my high school became my haven. It was a place that not only accepted misfits, but welcomed them. I learned to use my motion constructively on stage rehearsals, and the immovable deadline to opening night lent a necessary structure to my life. While sewing costumes and building sets, I learned the sense of accomplishment that comes from literally building something, seeing it completed before me and hearing others praise my efforts. I understand that schools are burdened as never before, expected to do so much more with less and less, much like nonprofit theater. But the final thing I have learned from my time in the theater is big dream, then work like hell to make them a reality. When you cut drama and music, you are robbing kids to a chance to learn to do just that. The next letter is from Mr. Kevin McGinnis from the Keystone Innovation District. He states that as Keystone Innovation Community Corporation and Independent 501(c)(3) focused on planning, development, and operating, the district brings numerous higher education institutions, corporate innovators, entrepreneurs, and philanthropic interest to the district provides an opportunity for KCPS to leverage the ecosystem for the entire district, investing in innovative workforce development efforts through the reuse of the facility and working with Keystone Community Corporation to identify and support new applied learning opportunities for KCPS are two areas for consideration, creating more on-ramp for K-12 learners to engage with these higher ed partners and develop real-world learning opportunities through the various career and workforce development programs can happen with the focused efforts at manual tech. Next, we have Ms. Georgiana Buchanan. The enrichment gain from visual and performing arts programs throughout every educational level is a necessary component to public education. There are numerous studies showing how the arts profoundly impact students with positive multidisciplinary outcomes. I'm speaking as a parent with a child who will enter a KCPS middle school fall 2020 and also a professional theater artist to underscore the urgency for expansion of arts funding to reach students. The district would be improved by student access to participation in concerts, plays, musicals, art shows, dance showcases, and exhibitions, whether as part of the curriculum or as extracurricular activity. whether as part of the curriculum or as extracurricular activity. There is no doubt that the increase of funding towards arts programming would yield artistic excellence, learned skills, and more comprehensive worldview and greater visibility to the student population through bolstering creative output. I strongly urge the board to review the budget with an eye towards increasing the amount of funding for the arts and identifying aid to the weakest programs throughout the district. Looks like the final one, I'm sorry, we have two more. The next one is from Ms. Annette Lance Simmons, the executive director for the Center for Conflict Resolution. I want to say how appreciative we are to be a part of the transformation of the school district towards trauma-informed restorative justice practices. Since my work with Dr. Woodley and with the other administrators in the district, we have been able to train about 3,500 students in conflict resolution and about 600 adults in restorative practices. Last week, we did a two-day virtual restorative practices training with 28 counselors and other support staff in the district. High praise for their engagement, wisdom, and tenacity. With the support of the board, we look forward to continuing to help create an atmosphere that pursues dignity as well as skills for opening and honest communication for every student and every adult in KCPS family. Final one from Mr. John Story. I've had a career in arts for my entire life, for the last 20 years. I have made my living in Kansas City. I've worked for every major arts organization in the area, presented shows at every major venue, worked with hundreds of professionals, performing artists, athletes, and bringing entertainment to this community. I've served as an adjunct faculty member at two area universities. I sit on the board of directors for a nonprofit, and I'm an academic advisor for one of the community colleges. I've conducted guest seminars for students in Kansas City Public Schools and participated in career guidance workshops. I have had the privilege of watching former students go on to make their way in the field of arts and entertainment, bringing all of you the cultural fulfillment that Kansas City, that makes Kansas City your home. There is no, no going to the movies or sporting events, no concerts, no festivals, no plays, no symphonies, and no ballets. None of the things that bring us, bring all of us together to celebrate what gives us joy. It will not be easy, but in the same way that a growing movie industry helped us get through the Great Depression and World War, we in the business will adapt, innovate, and overcome because there is a need, a need to bring light into certain times. This is what the arts do, they speak to and for our collective humanity. If ever there was a time to support the arts in our schools, it's now, there are more questions than answers, and the ones we'll find those answers are looking to us to give them the tools they need to invent the future. Thank you, Board Chair Manser, for allowing us to go over a little bit there. But that is the end of public comment that I have received, both written and virtual testimony. So I'll forward out the full list of these letters because I think this was my first time reading them, and I think they're very emotionally written and would be well worth reading.
Thank you so much, Mr. Abarka. We appreciate that, and we do plan to distribute those by tomorrow to the board and to the administration. And keep in mind that, to the public who are still with us, that there is still opportunity for you to send in your letters and emails. You may send them directly to the, to the board secretary's office, or you may send them your communications through. Let's Talk is another easy way to do so. So we still welcome that comment. To keep us on schedule, everyone, we will go ahead and conclude this budget hearing this evening. We have another meeting that is waiting to start, and we have some members of the public waiting there. So I'm going to ask my colleagues to adjourn with me and to go ahead and log in for the next meeting. Thank you very much.